Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our wonderful Hines meeting. And we're going to get our reading started tonight. We can all stand with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. Can't we go through the opening process? Check. President. Brown here. Doctor Zabrowski, another state senator. Here. That's over there. Todd here. Yeah, Thomas was running until late this morning. He hears that time. Great, thank you. We're going to have our agenda. Do you have any questions on the amended bills? I'll make a motion to approve the amended bill.
What's important, sir?
Thanks for your motion. And now, if supported, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I'm going to have to exit the agenda. Are there any additions or resolutions for this evening?
What addition, Madam Chair? If we could put the Tetra Tech memo and act item for prosecute on the agenda?
Got it, I got that. All right. Number 10, something like that. Anything else? I make a motion to approve the amended agenda?
What?
Uh, thanks for your motion. And I'll check support. Thank you. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. It takes a sign of the first call of the color. It's an opportunity for anyone to share your thoughts. Keep in mind, it is not a question-and-answer session for us on the board. And we do try to really give three minutes. Do we have our first speaker? Come on up.
My name is Craig Woodburn. I live at 450 Rush Road. Still a bit of a thing to use. The last time I came, I came because I felt the planning commission had operated outside the problems of expected parliamentary procedure. I was dismissed like I was an annoyance. I looked at the definitions of a quorum that were suggested as the meeting progressed. And I couldn't find one that involved an analysis of the vote. Seemed to me that the establishment of the quorum all took place before business could take place. Had I prevailed, at very best, I would have delayed living water by a couple of weeks. And for me, it's not about living water. It's about procedure. It's about doing it right. And when you don't do it right, you do it wrong. I'm very concerned about how this township does business. No one likes to be treated like I was treated at that meeting. You can't just say, "It's going to work out that way anyway, so we're just going to go ahead and do it." That's called cutting a corner. And if you cut the corner that publicly here, what's going on behind closed doors? Why do we have such a big problem telling Biltmore to go away? Why do we have lawyers involved with that notification process? Why was the planner concerned that that happened before you guys addressed it and before it was made privy to us? Why did the planning commission know that that special meeting was going to be canceled the day it was announced? It was brought up in the comments from the commissioners at their previous meeting. All that aside, it was very disconcerting that when I announced my address, I'm labeled as a special interest group. I think it's wholly inappropriate for an officer of this township to write an editorial that victimizes a single group of citizens because of where they live, because of where their children go to school. My taxes are the same as everyone else in this township, and I pay them on time. I don't feel like I've ever been a member of Northfield Neighbors other than being part of the neighborhood of Northfield Township. And I believe a lot in this place. The people so aptly labeled Northfield Neighbors as an evil entity are the people that show up here the most. I was especially taken with descriptions like, "Northfield neighbors are the group of people that live in Northfield that have an Ann Arbor mailing address." Oh, my God! And their kids go to Ann Arbor schools. And they're likely not to shop in Whitmore Lake. I don't know how many times I've said something at one of these meetings, like, "Did you know there's a bowling alley and there's open lanes on Saturday night at 10 o'clock in this town?" And people go, "There is a Coney Island?" I was especially taken with the note that the Northfield Neighbors come with an agenda that they will bring with them that is to use taxpayers' dollars to fight the people living next to them who are trying to develop their own property in the southwest edge of Northfield Township. They want to use your money to fight their battle. I didn't know we had that kind of battle. That hasn't been made appropriate yet. I'll quit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And actually, yeah, we were giving you almost four minutes there. All right. Our next speaker?
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside Drive. First of all, I want to say something on a happy note. Kudos to everyone that made the Fourth of July festivities such a great success. I had family here from out of state. They enjoyed it thoroughly. The carnival at the middle school and the parade. Everything was just fantastic. Now on to something different. Also, once again, the August 2 primary is just around the corner. And to those candidates that would move this township backward, I'm asking that politics and personal agendas be discontinued or put aside and concentrate on positive plans to continue moving this township forward in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker this evening? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Julia Henshaw. I live at 4681 Six Mile Road. And I wanted to say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for having the meet-the-candidate's night. I was happy to meet Jackie Otto. I was happy to meet Janet Chick. And I was disappointed that I didn't see Supervisor Armstrong or some of the other people who aren't here. I won't even mention them since they aren't here. It seems a little odd to me that they aren't here. I don't go to many of these meetings. And I thought, really, you know, there should be a few other people here sitting up there. In any case, I just wanted to say that was really interesting and very informative. And I also wanted to let everybody know that there is now a Facebook group called Northfield Area News. It's an open group on Facebook. All you have to do is go to Facebook and, I guess, click on it. I don't know. I was able to do it very easily. And we have responses from 12 of the candidates that are running for office on August 2 there. And that way, you can read it, you can think about it. It's very gratifying to know that that kind of information is available now on social media to everybody. So I would just encourage anyone who hasn't tried it out to check out Northfield Area News because there's other information there. And by the way, I'm looking for somebody to brush hog my field. So thank you very much. If you know anybody, I'd be happy to hear who it is.
Thank you. And our next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Lenore Zelenok. I live at 144 Six Mile Road. I just want to say thanks for everyone for the Fourth of July. The parade was great for Kiwanis putting on the parade, the people that put on the fireworks. It was great. And I do, and we didn't have the Fourth of July barbecue this year. And I really just wanted to say thanks for everybody for all their support in the past. We just didn't get the volunteers to put it on this year. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to put it on, not so much from a Kiwanis perspective, but from a community group. But again, Kiwanis thanks everybody for all their support that they have given us in the past and continue to give us at the Kiwanis store. So come out and support the store. We support the community, and it's all a good thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have our next speaker? Come on up.
Susie Winkowski, 5558 Hellner Road. My comments tonight are addressed specifically to Kathy Braun, the treasurer, in response to her editorial in the Koran. I wonder if I might have your attention. Your editorial specifically attacked and demonized residents, your constituents, in theory, in the southwest part of our township where I've lived for 27 years. I am personally offended by your inappropriate and unprofessional remarks. You're supposed to be representing all of us in the township. Why do you feel so free to attack those of us who live in the Ann Arbor School District, a district that you were very anxious to partner with very recently? You can't have it both ways. You can't hate us and want to partner with us in the same breath. You attacked me, but you know nothing about me. Your editorial is comprised of lies, accusations, and speculation, and clearly shows the prejudice that is the root of so many problems in this community, this "us against them" mentality. We are part of this township, just like you. We pay our townships, we pay our taxes, and we're dismissed like a special interest group. I mean, really. My household patronizes many businesses in this township, including Tractor Supply, Nowatzke's, Broadscape Nursery, The Rock Connection, Alexander's, Whitmore Lake Tavern, Carquest Automotive, Pea Berries, and Polly's. We donate many books to the library and many goods to the Kiwanis store. So how dare you say that I don't support this community or the businesses here? You claim that I'm against the Waterside Park. Where are your sources for that? I've never spoken to you. You don't know me at all. It's blatantly untrue. I am all for having more access to the park for all residents, even of us in that reviled Ann Arbor School District. Your way of moving forward is to dredge up things that happened over 10 years. That doesn't seem very productive. How about we move on to the topic, to what's been going on under your watch? You, as the treasurer, do not appear to have a clue about finances. Under your watch and recommendation, the township sold over $3 million worth of bonds at a loss of $300,000, not to mention the loss of $150,000 of interest over the last three years. Those bonds were double and AAA rated and insured. Investments don't come any safer than that. You, yes, you, lost the township $450,000 of our hard-earned tax dollars. That's scandalous, and it's on you. Not only do we have the second-highest tax rate in the county, but you're throwing our money away. Are we so very flush with cash? I would like to request a personal apology from you this evening to myself and all the residents of the southwest part of the township who live in the Ann Arbor School District. And I would also request that you publish, that the Koran publish one. And I can assure you that you will not be getting my vote.
Thank you. Do we have our next speaker?
I'm Mr. Chair, please. I have some papers. I need some extra space. First, I want to say... Yep, I will. I first wanted, well, let me introduce myself. My name is Patrick Tietro. I live at 8020 Kearney. And I'm a candidate for trustee in this year's election cycle. I do want to apologize. I was called out of business with almost no notice. I was in Toluca, Mexico, representing our company. So I missed the candidate's night. And I was very sad to miss that. Please don't start the clock yet. Apparently, we have a very popular author with us, Treasurer Braun. I have some comments as well. Mine may be a little bit different than some of the others. I would like to start out by thanking Treasurer Braun for contributing to the literature in our township. So thank you. Now, some of your views are very clear. I'll actually start by one aspect of the paper that I actually agree with very much. And I'd like to read that if I may. And this is kind of coming into the body of the text. It says, "The last board worked very hard to make changes by hiring a professional manager and having elected officials be part-time, no benefits, paid for approximately 12 hours per week. This is the first time the elected officials who are on the board have not been career politicians." I'm certainly, I'm an engineer. I'm not a career politician, so I agree with that. "They have brought a wide range of professional business experience." And this is very important. "Professional business experience." I'm going to bring some professional business experience with me tonight that I want to share to help move the township forward to the table. And because they have other full-time jobs, they are up to date on what is going on in the business world today. I've worked in the business world for over 25 years. I've worked for some fine companies, United Technologies, the Eaton Corporation, currently at the Bosch Corporation. So as a candidate for trustee, well, first of all, I'd like to comment. Also, some professional value that I have is, from the article written by Treasurer Braun, it's pretty clear she doesn't agree with the opinions of the Northfield neighbors. And apparently, she doesn't like the Northfield neighbors. That approach, to me, is a little overly confrontational. I have a different approach. My approach is, if you like the Northfield township, if you like the Northfield neighbors, if you don't like the Northfield neighbors, if you don't know who the Northfield neighbors are or you don't care about the Northfield neighbors, it doesn't matter. I'm interested in your opinions. And I'm interested in your concerns, and I want to hear about them. Makes no difference. Everyone's going to have differences of opinion with me. You know, people may not like my haircut. I don't know why. It's perfectly good a haircut, but some people don't like it. But that's okay. It doesn't mean I don't dislike you. It doesn't mean that we can't work together. It can't, it doesn't mean we can't laugh about our differences. So I'm not a confrontational person, so I think I have a different approach than Treasurer Braun. But as a candidate for trustee and being an engineer, I really like to dig into, and mentioned here also, I mean, I called it out in the text, but also mentioned in your article is something I do believe is an important aspect of the operation of our township. And that is, how does the relationship with the board and the township manager work?
We're at four minutes. I'll give you 30 more seconds, okay?
Okay. So I tried to get information relative to how that relationship is working. And I'll try to move this along very quickly. So I did, I filed a FOIA request. And what I was really looking for is, I really was looking for the nuts and bolts of how this relationship is working. So the, some of the most important documents I was looking for is I wanted to look at what the, essentially, what the appraisal process is, what are the, what are the goals, what are the targets? How is Mr. Fink being evaluated?
I don't mean to cut you short, but we do, we, I've always been very generous with the time. We're at four minutes, over four and a half minutes right now. And we do have another second call to the public that we can do there. Because if I allow you the extra time, then it's unfair to the other people that do keep their talks within 33 minutes, okay?
Okay. Is there anybody that would...
I need you to...
...give up their time for me?
No, we don't do it that way.
Okay, so I'm being cut off?
Yeah, we have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. It is three minutes for everyone. And I thought I was quite generous. And... Thank you. It's at five minutes now. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Good evening. I'm Marlene Chalkley. I live at 2665 Five Mile Road. And I just want to address your item number eight on your agenda, where we're talking about the Lakes Overlay District. There was just an oversight with the lakeside setback. It mentions 20 feet in the ordinances that you have, but the planning commission passed 25 feet for the lakeside setback. And that's to protect the lakes from runoff. So I just want to make sure that you know that when you're dealing with that item on the agenda. And I also want to say that the Lakes Overlay District has really been quite generous now to the residents there. We're allowing up to 25 more feet on the front side of SR of the single-family residential one homes and netting 20 feet on the single-family residential two-home envelopes. So there's more space for the homeowners to build on their site. And I think this will take care of a lot of concerns of the residents in that area. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker?
Thank you. Joanne Martella Pearson, 5756 Earhart Road. First of all, thank you for your service tonight. I don't know how you folks are going to do it all night with this temp in here. So I feel for you. I also want to say thank you for the candidate's night. I thought that was really excellent, really excellent. So I too am here to take issue with this guest editorial. Although some people are saying they are not Northfield neighbors, I am a Northfield neighbor and quite proud to be one. So there are, I could take this apart point by point, paragraph by paragraph, but three minutes will not allow that. So first of all, that the Northfield neighbors want to get back to their agenda of halting all development in Northfield Township. I quote. That is not true. I'm not sure if you checked the website, Treasurer Braun. You can look at northfieldneighbors.today where it says right on there, "That is not, that is not what we're about." So that is not true. That the Northfield neighbors are a group of people who live in the Ann Arbor School District. Not true. I live in the Whitmore Lake Public School District. I pay Whitmore Lake Public School taxes. So, and we don't care about the Whitmore Lake schools. Not true. I happen to hold a teacher certification and a PhD in education. I care very, very, very much about schools and have spent my life working with kids with language and learning disabilities. I care very much. That they don't shop in the Whitmore Lake District. Not true. Just like Ms. Winkowski said, my husband and I work very, very hard to shop locally. And that, so we were, many of us offended by this because it is not true. So I am hoping that people will go to northfieldneighbors.today, also go to the new website that Julia mentioned, and get the facts, talk with the candidates because this is not where we're, what we are about. The guest editorial is titled "Forward or Backward." I think it is also setting up a divide. I think a better title would have been "Us or Them." And we have enough exclusion of people in this state, in this country, in this world. We can begin with "including" right here in our own backyard. And so I know you are running for treasurer. And fortunately, people, we have another choice. Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. And our next speaker?
My name's David Gordon, 5558 Hellner Road. My comments mostly are directed toward the treasurer at this point based on the article that she wrote in the Koran. Number one, you never identified yourself as the treasurer. The Koran has published articles by our township manager, township planners, and now the township treasurer, but doesn't bother to inform the public that's reading it who's writing the articles. Your article, "Madam Treasurer," was ugly, disrespectful, full of lies, and lacking any kind of facts. I understand why you wrote it. You'd like to distract voters from the terrible job you've done as treasurer. Distracting the voters with lies about Northfield neighbors isn't going to be effective because we haven't been involved, we haven't been on the board in eight years. This is on you. It's not Northfield neighbors. It's time for this board to accept some responsibility for your actions, and it's time for some accountability. It's your job as treasurer to know about finances. And based on what we've seen, you obviously know just enough to be dangerous. You lost us $450,000 on our township investments. It was your first big recommendation to this board back in 2013. And you've been telling people these bonds were risky investments. Municipal bonds are what the rest of the world buys when they need a safe haven for their money. Most of these bonds were double and AAA rated, insured, government-backed, and generating for this township $50,000 to $60,000 a year in interest, most of which was going to the sewer district. If you live in the sewer district, the decision by this treasurer and the board lost $300 for each and every one of the 1,000-plus members of the sewer district. These bonds are traded in for CDs, which are generating not $50,000 or $60,000 a year, but about two. The library board at the time decided not to sell their bonds. They held them until they needed the cash, at which time they sold their bonds and they came out ahead. They made a much smarter decision. This is the biggest scandal in years. Residents don't know about it because it was never printed in the Koran. Instead, the Koran is busy printing editorials that recommend that everyone on the board be re-elected for doing such a good job. Selling these government-backed, insured bonds for CDs for safety is like Chief Wagner selling off a $450,000 fire truck because it might get in an accident and instead riding around on a bicycle with a backpack sprayer. If he did something like that, he would no longer be the public safety director of our community. As a result of this scandal, in most other communities that might have had some press to let people know, there'd be some resignations here. And I would like to recommend that the treasurer resign and give back all the money she's been paid since 2012, as well as the supervisor and clerk. You're the administration. Together, each of you are getting $50,000 during your four-year term. So the question becomes, what have you done to generate for this $50,000? And I really don't have a good answer, other than, you know, maybe the $52,000 that was spent on this room. I don't know why this room is so much nicer than it was right down the hall. But it's a waste of money, as far as I'm concerned. This community spends a lot of money. We have the second-highest taxes in the township, in the county, and it's being wasted by this administration. Lastly, I think it was a real shame that the supervisor and the clerk failed to show up and meet the candidate's night. We're told when we come to this microphone that this is not a question-and-answer period. I've been told that now for years by this supervisor. When there was an opportunity to have some question-and-answers, she wasn't there, and neither was the treasurer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers this evening? All right, let's get on to the rest of their agenda.
Madam Supervisor?
Yes.
May I comment?
Oh, absolutely. We're on Board Member Comments anyways. And Township Manager?
May I be first?
Absolutely.
I know I'm not a board member. Whether it's politically feasible to state what I'm going to state or not, I think is, at this moment, irrelevant. I think some statements need to be made to the comments that were presented by the public today, tonight. Your opinion of Treasurer Braun's work and role as treasurer is your own, and you're certainly entitled to present that. There's no question about that. Ultimately, her performance will be judged in three or four months, one month at the primary level, and in four or five months in the general election. And that will be the will of the voters. The reality is that the sale of the investments for Northfield Township was an entire board decision. And that decision was made with significant advice and consultation with many experts. The decision to sell those municipal investments was mostly based on the fact that the investments were strung out many, many years, some as high as 10 years out. At the time, the, there was significant risk that interest rates were rising. Now, in hindsight, it didn't happen. Hindsight is 2020. And we cannot constantly critique decisions in hindsight. We only have the ability to make the best decision we can in the moment that we make it with the information that we have. Those investments were sold because they were, they were very, very long-term investments. And they were not just municipal bonds. They were what they call step-up bonds from Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae. The bonds were tied to the mortgage industry. And as the interest rates rise, I see people shaking their heads, but this is true. Well, I'm going to get to so whats. As the interest rates rise, those bonds would have not been callable, which means that the dollars that the township had invested would have not been liquid. Risk is not just a function of whether or not your money is protected over a period of time. Risk, in a municipal investment standpoint, is also a function of liquidity. And if anybody would like to know, ask a financial expert or advisor. If the township has investments that are worth, let's say, $3 million, but they cannot realize those investments were $3 million because the... realize those investments were $3 million because the, because the value of the investment is not $3 million, but rather only $3 million at maturity, then you do not have a $3 million investment. Each one of those bonds, as interest rates stayed low, would be called. That's, bonds are called all the time by investment entities that want to take back the bond instrument and issue different debt at a lower interest rate. The risk was that those bonds would no longer be callable. There were also bonds in the portfolio that were of significantly greater risk. The decision was made to sell the bonds at the time that the bonds were sold because the loss would have been not as significant as if the interest rates rose. And at the time, the entire financial community was talking about the quantitative easing, which is essentially the Fed's rising interest rates. That's the decision that was made. Now, ultimately, the people can decide whether or not that decision was a good decision or was a bad decision. But that decision rests not just with Kathy Braun, it rests on the shoulders of the entire board, both the board members that you support and the board members that you do not support. The decision was made with advice from experts, and the decision was well thought out. Certainly, people can second guess it, certainly people can disagree with it, but to shoulder the burden on one board member is not appropriate. She is the treasurer, but the decision of investments at that level rests with the whole board. That is the law. Secondly, as somebody who's had a relationship with Kathy Braun over the last three or four years, I can tell you that as an individual, certainly when the Northfield neighbors and the issue of development in this township was at its most contentious was when Biltmore first came into view, if you will, when they presented their proposal. Kathy Braun was very much against the development of the rural areas and was a strong supporter, very strong supporter of keeping the rural community of Northfield Township rural and not increasing subdivision, ma'am, ma'am, please, and not increasing subdivision development. Incredibly strong supporter. And on many occasions Kathy and I had conversations and dialogue to that effect, even at times contentious conversation and dialogue. To demonize a sitting board member for actions by the whole board is not appropriate. I have known Kathy over the last three years to be a very good treasurer. It's not to say that I'm supporting Kathy or not supporting Kathy, I'm, I don't support candidates. But over the last three years Kathy has instituted many policies that were not done in the previous administration. I, I think that if we are going to move forward, then it behooves all of us to stop with the rhetoric and stop with the absolute negative comments for the sake of being negative. I can tell you that reading the Northfield neighbors website has turned my stomach at times. I have gone home and read things on that website that are absolutely false, that are personally attacking to individuals, that misrepresent the facts. Certainly, there are shards of truth to what is said, but it is a website full of opinions and assumptions that often goes after individuals in a very personal way. And that has been discussed in this township and by this board and by people in this community since the Northfield neighbors and the website and the support of the Northfield neighbors has occurred. So I would ask everyone, those in the audience, and to an extent those on the board, to end this constant negativity, whether it's directed at me, whether it's directed at this board, or whether it's directed at individuals in this community. I have been, I have personally been the product of significant attacks from the Northfield neighbors and the Northfield neighbors website. So for anyone in this audience to shake their head to say that's not true, I will personally attest to it. Now, I have broad shoulders, I am a municipal manager, and that is part of my role, and I have to take it if it, if it comes. But I will tell you emphatically that the stuff that is discussed on that website and written about is very often not true and very often a complete misrepresentation of the facts. And I have, I have said many, many times that if you would like to have questions or a dialogue or conversation, to talk with me, or to have a conversation or dialogue with any of the board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Yep, Angie, you said, you want to say something? Go ahead.
Oh, I'd just like to say that while I appreciate people wanting to come out and speak to me at Meet the Candidates, I am not a candidate. I am not running for election. Good luck to the next clerk. I certainly hope they can take some of the abuse. And also, one more thing just about Kathy. Anybody who could call Kathy unethical doesn't know Kathy. If you knew Kathy, those words would never come out of your mouth.
Thank you.
And may I, may I say one more?
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the things that is unique in this community is the role of the manager. The last board didn't have a township manager, this board does, okay? And the role of the manager is a very unique role in this community. And specifically, I'm speaking to one of the residents who's not in this room anymore, who submitted a FOIA request, significant FOIA request on all of my contract documents and the like. The role of the manager is to run the day-to-day operations of this government, is to advise the board on policy issues. The role of the manager is to function as the chief administrative officer of the township. I have spoken with, here in Michigan, many attorneys, many professionals in places that have consistent manager-led governments, and what we are doing here is not unique to any community that has had a long history of managers. And to a certain extent, I even go out of my way to have the board vote and make decisions on things that are typically considered administrative and managerial from a municipal perspective, but I bring it to the board because both perception and because of a change in structure that has happened so soon. I, I have repeatedly had people come up to me and say, Howard, you are seen in this community as somebody who cares and somebody who works hard for the betterment of Northfield Township. Ultimately, if the next board decides that that's not the case, then they can make a different decision. I am proud of the work that I have done. In truth, in fact, I feel like the work I have done over the last three years is probably the best work I've ever done in my entire career. I'm proud of the work that this board has accomplished, and I'm also proud of the opportunities that we look to in the future to accomplish. And to Mr. Tertrow, I'm proud of the evaluations that I've received from this board. They are reflected in the brief comments made after the evaluation procedures, and they also reflected on the raise that was provided to me by the board, and I again thank the board members for that, even the board members who voted against it. Those documents are considered private, and we are currently in the process of doing the research to determine whether or not they legally need to be turned over. And if they are legally turned over, I have no problem with it because they're very strong, they're very strong evaluations. I don't know what the future of the next three or four years is going to look like for this township, but I will tell you that whether or not you have me as a manager or anybody else as a manager, or hire a different manager, I sincerely hope you do not move away from this style of government. It is the predominant form of government in all of the United States, and it exists for a reason. Because board members should be policy-oriented individuals and staff should be administration, and there should be a separation. And I feel like we've done great work, and again, if the next board decides differently, so be it. I think part of what's happening here is that this community doesn't have a good history and understanding of a manager form of government. And I encourage you, if you don't, to actually educate yourself before you come and have opinions and make comments. Talk to people who have worked in communities with city managers or with township managers. Talk to Lisa Limble, who was a planner for 20 years and worked with many city managers over the years, and you will find out what the form of government is. I'm sorry for being overly, overly talkative.
Hey, no, this is not a time. Please. You can talk at the other, oh, call to the public. Tracy, do you have anything this evening for comments?
No.
Okay. Jackie?
The only thing that I wanted to say is in regards to the investments is, the investments, every board member here has a fiduciary responsibility to the community. And the decision to vote on the investments was a board decision. Based on the information that was provided, based on the expert presentations, the board made a decision. I think if we had a crystal ball, maybe today the decision would be different. And unfortunately, it turned out the way it did. So I take responsibility, just as everyone here should take the responsibility of the outcome of that decision.
Great. Angie, anything else?
Kathy? I just want to make a comment about the figures, and, and it's also interesting that the people who demand that we listen to them and stand here then leave the room when other people are talking because they don't want to hear it. I'm not pro-development, I'm not anti-development, I'm pro-wise development. You keep talking, I've wa, I've looked at the Northfield neighbors today website, and I too have gotten sick to my stomach. I feel like you're bullies. At one time, I donated money to Northfield neighbors. I've done a lot of things as treasurer. I collected 20 years of uncollected personal property taxes. 20 years they weren't collected. Our bank closed. Whatever advice you're getting from people who sell stocks and bonds, just remember, that's advice, that is not a guarantee. I could sleep at night when I knew that the investments were protected as I would protect my own, so that the people in this township could understand those investments. You sit here and you talk in bits and pieces, but if you looked at that overall portfolio, those were not guaranteed insured. You also mentioned the amounts of interest lost. That's if those bonds were payable and callable and held to the very end of their maturity. The sewer department cashed in $600,000 to pay back the Horseshoe Lake SAD District. The library cashed in theirs to put an addition on their building. When that decision was made, we talked about it for seven months. Even hiring a professional advisor for $20,000 a year would get us advice, no guarantees, and all they want to do is put you in something else depending on what they're selling at that moment. Our auditor was the one who recommended initially, and you say it's not on tape, but he talked to me right when I came in office. I didn't cook this up on my own. All I knew is all of us on the board, none of us are professional investment people. It's very complicated, very complicated, and if you look at that portfolio, I don't know. It just wasn't something the average resident of this township could understand. Now, if you want to look at the investments, they're guaranteed, and your principal will always be safe and guaranteed. The Romulus bond went completely defunct. If it was government insured, that was a municipal bond. Why did it go to zero? Why didn't the government pay us back? It just doesn't make sense. I look at your website, and there's so much inaccurate that at this point, and I did write the article because at this point, I really feel I'm being bullied. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Janet, anything?
Well, I can't say much more than what's been said already, and I apologize because I do have a respiratory thing going on, but it is true. We all voted on that based on the advice of the experts, and, I mean, I wouldn't take the opinion of anybody that wasn't an expert on either side of this table. That's the only people we had to go to, to listen to, and we did, the auditor did say that we needed to make our money less risky, and so that's what, everybody voted, all of us. It was unanimous decision, so it's on all of us. And Kathy is the best treasurer we've had in decades, so you can have an opinion on anything you want to have an opinion on, but it's just an opinion, and you're welcome to it. Thank you.
Great. Oh, yeah, my sentiments to everything that's already been said, and Kathy, I do want to say, thank you for doing a fabulous job in the treasurer's office. You've done more than anyone's done in years in our treasurer's department, so thank you. Hindsight is great, yep, but we all made an educated decision regarding the investments. As for not coming to the Meet the Candidates, I already had a previous engagement prior to the date of that Meet the Candidates meeting, so, sorry, I was not there. I ran four years ago for just the love of this township, and that is why I'm running again. I totally agree with our current setup of having the model with the township manager. And anyone who says that we should go back to our old way, I really don't think they know what they're talking about. Howard has accomplished more in the three, three and a half years that he has been here than anyone has ever done. He has brought things to this board's attention that I don't think anyone has ever considered, thought of. It is a position that people go to school for, to be educated. And anyone who's going to come in here and think that they know how to run a township government without absolutely any experience, better think about it again. Even myself, as the supervisor, my, I oversee assessing, and I've been a real estate broker for 30 years, a very successful one, by the way. And I don't even feel comfortable that that is a statutory duty for me. Even though our assessors take care of it, it still falls on my shoulders. I can't tell you how they come up with some of these taxes, and I've sit and go to the classes and asked. And for all my experience, I can tell you what the property's worth, but I can't tell you the formula that they do it. So anyone who thinks that they can handle all this, you have no idea what Howard does on a daily basis. And anyone who is supporting it, I believe, is truly wanting this township to go backwards again. It's the first time this, we've had a very nice board, no fighting, no humiliating, public humiliation amongst us. Do we want that again? Think about it. And by the way, to your website, I have never gone to it because I have heard about it and think it is disgusting, and I will not be part of it. And it really sickens me that all of you get up here all the time and try to do your campaigning on our time. This is business for the township, not for elections. I've never said anything before, but I'm done listening to it. The Planning Commission did have a quorum, thank you. And Mr. Gordon, I've heard you get up here during the call to public once when the sewer district was going in for the Whitmore Lake Commercial District down there for our existing businesses, and you stood here and said, "I will stop it at all costs because it's another tool out of my tool." tool out of my toolbox." And once again, you will do anything to hurt anyone in this township for your own gain.
Doc question, answer session. Thank you. All right. Anyone else on the board? Thank you. Any correspondence and announcements? No? All right, thank you. That takes us to our depart, department head reports. Does anyone have any questions for Tim? He did not have his report in the package. There was nothing to report. Any questions for Tim? No? All right, thank you. Police and fire, if you have anything, contact Mr. Wagner. And let's see, ma'am, financial report will do. Anything for Kathy? All right, thank you. Let's see, Parks and Rec. Tracy, you got anything on Parks and Rec?
Not anything that's not in the manager's report.
Jackie, anything for the ZBA?
There will be a meeting on the 18th. We did not have a meeting in June.
Great, thank you. Janet, planning commission report?
Planning commission met on July 6th. They had two public hearings, one on a proposed amendment to the Northfield Township zoning ordinance text to create a new zoning overlay district, and on a proposed amendment to the standard used by the zoning board of appeals when considering and granting variances from the zoning ordinance, and those are before the board tonight.
Thank you. And Howard, that leaves us with the township manager's report. Anything in addition to your report? Are you going to get any questions for Howard?
Just two comments. One is, I left in your packets, the total cost of the construction of the boardroom. Total cost came to $52,269, which was under budget. And then the other thing is, in your packets is a breakdown of all the comments and a tally of all the comments related to the Van Curler property from the township website.
Thank you. Anything else, anyone for Howard? All right. That takes us on to our presentation of the evening, which is the People's Express Request for Funds.
Okay. My name is Lenore Zelenek. I'm here on Regards of People Express. Maybe this isn't such a good night to do this, but I will go forward and ask, or tell you. So about a year ago, I came before the board on Regards of People Express to ask for $10,000 so that we could reduce the transportation costs to our residents. I just am here to say and report on what we have done, and actually ask you to continue the contract, or renew the contract for another, at least $10,000. So with the contract that we had, we were able to go get some grant money. So the residents are now paying $5 a ride to go out of town, which is within Washtenaw County, which would be medical appointments or other business in Washtenaw County. Before that, they were paying $45 a ride. We have done so far through May, 875 rides out of town. And again, with your contract for in-town rides, we have been able to allow the residents basically, well, not basically, but pay a dollar. Before that, they were paying $12 a ride for in-town transportation. We have done 73 through May of in-town transportations. So there was some concern when we came before the board and asked for the $10,000, would we actually really be able to get enough rides to spend that $10,000, plus the $20,000 in grants? Well, from all the rides that we have given, again, only through May, the money that we have spent for the township is over $10,000. It's $10,428. And with the production throughout the year, we think that we would actually spend around $16,600 if we had, with the money for the rides that the township is providing. So that is kind of the cover letter that I provided. If we want to move to more of the detailed schedule, which is the People Express Northfield Township, October 20, 2015 through May 2016 rides, and I did a projection based on the rides that we have given. So I'd like to bring your attention to the total column, TOT, as well as the total year. Again, there you'll see the numbers of the total rides. Out of town is 875, or 7, 875 rides. In-town is the 73. So we have given a total through May of 948 rides. With the project, projection, and I actually took like the last five months, because our rides have been increasing, more people, the word of mouth. I know Mr. Doc asked how we advertise. It's really right now, word of mouth. The rides are increasing. We're afraid if we actually advertised, that we would be astronomical, the amount of people that we would get, and the amount of money that it would cost at this point in time. So the total year, looking at both the out-of-town and in-town rides, the projection is over about 1,500 rides, we think we will give the residents. As I mentioned, the residents, because of the contract and the matching grants, they're paying $5 a ride for out-of-town and $1 in-town. So the residents have basically spent about $4,500. I'm rounding a little bit. And then our projection, it would be around $7,100. If we didn't have the grant, basically, the residents, it would have been a cost of about $40,000 for the total amount of rides, which means with the grant and your contribution, not contribution, the contract, is we've saved about $35,000 for the residents. And again, the projection is that we expect that it'll be about $65,000 of total rides, if the residents had to pay the $45 and the $12 a ri, or the $12 a ride. Again, for the total year, we would expect that the residents will save around $57,000. Again, there was some concern when we went into this contract, that would we really get the ride and the ridership? So far, again, we've spent about $10,500 of the money that the township has given us, and we project that it'll be around $15,000 by the, the end of the year. And I would just like to take the opportunity and share two stories about rides. One is, just a resident here was going up to Livingston County for medical appointments. We, unfortunately, we're Washtenaw County, we don't get grants for Livingston County, but we worked with Northfield Human Services and was able to get them their medical appointment inside or within Washtenaw County. So now he's able, or the person's able to take advantage of the ride and the discount. So where he was paying around $45 there and back, he's now paying $5 there and back. So, and I'd like to just relay a personal story. My mom, unfortunately, now is wheelchair-bound. And so getting transportation, and she lives in Allen Park, and you'd think it'd be abundant. I looked at about five different agencies, and I had to give her to the doctor appointment. It was $67 there and $67 back. So it was $134 to give her to the doctor appointment, which was 10 miles. And she also had the issue of she was going from Wayne County to Oakland County. So you run into some difficulty crossing county lines. It was 10 miles away, but it was still very expensive. Unfortunately, the service was not very good. They actually came 15 minutes late, which got me worried, but at that point, what do you do? It's not like you get to call someone else up and say, "Can you send a van?" We went to the medical appointment, and it was two and a half hours after the appointment that they came and got us. And they said it would be an hour. So it is a very important service. Again, these are two stories, and one's personal, that we provide to give the residents a discount and give them to where they need to go at a reasonable cost. Otherwise, family members are taking time off, you might have to rent a van, or you just don't go. So therefore, I think we have used and have spent the $10,000 that, in the contract, and again, it's projected that it'll be closer to about 15,000 or 16,000. So I am asking that you would renew the contract, or not renew it, but do a new contract for the next year, at least for $10,000. And if you would like to do it a little bit more, we certainly take that. But I think we have filled our obligation, have provided the residents a good service, and have used the money as we said we would. I don't have any questions.
I don't, does anyone else?
I just want to make a comment that you're providing a wonderful service to the people of the township, and I really appreciate the effort that you put into that.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
So, I'm looking for potentially, if anybody's interested, maybe a motion, we could relive the contract, or...
So that's what I was going to ask, is if we wanted to add something at the end of the agenda? Or if we wanted to vote on something now? It's up to you.
You know, we don't have in front of us, I mean, I think it's something for another meeting, you know, to actually make a motion to approve it again. My comments, you know, kind of, it goes till October. I'm almost, you know, hesitant to make this decision for, you know, knowing the election is coming up, let, you know, if it's us, then great, you know, or the next board make that decision. Whatever anyone wants to do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wouldn't mind voting on it, but I'd like to see a contract first.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you can provide that, that would be fine.
It would be the same contract, but I will make sure that's provided.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can add it on to the agenda for the next meeting.
Should I actually, should I add a little more, should I add a little more money? Make a little bit of a change to the contract? Pardon me? Pardon me? What was that? Certainly, you know, if you, well, we certainly want to get a contract, because our budget year is the same as yours. So we start from October through September, the end of September. I don't, you know, if, some people can say, but we are spending the money, we are spending more than the $10,000 that you have, it's projected. I expect the ridership to continue to go up as people get the service. So I don't know if the board would feel comfortable if I came in with a, you know...
I would write what you want, and then we can vote on it. Yep.
All right, will do.
Actually, I have one question for you, Lenore. I had asked this before, is there any plan to possibly look into a grant for Livingston County as well?
Well, unfortunately, we're in Washtenaw County. Lutz handles the Livingston County, and it just, the county's just, we're an agency in Washington County, Washtenaw County, and we, that's what we have to service, and that's what we get.
Okay. So it's just not feasible?
It is not. Lutz again, but then again, crossing county lines is very difficult in getting grants, and how the grants are provided at this point in time. But we will work, as we did, as I said, with the example of the one residence, we are working. If people are going up to Livingston County, we are directing them, and we'll work with Northfield Human Services to get them to appointments into Washtenaw County, so they can take advantage of the service.
Great. Thank you. That takes us on to our public hearing for the evening. I'll make a motion to open our public hearing for the industrial facilities tax exemption for Arvansango. Thank you. Ingstrom motion, and Bron supported. I need a roll call for this. Thomas?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Westover?
Yes.
Ingstrom, yes. Bron?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. This public hearing is for anyone in the audience to share your comments, thoughts, and speak about the tax exemption certificate for Arvansango. Sango, sorry. All right. Going once, twice, anyone in the audience here to share your thoughts or speak? Going twice, third and final time, anyone in the audience here to speak? Thank you. I will make a motion to close our public hearing. Ingstrom motion, and Chick supported. I'll roll call it again. Bron?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Ingstrom, yes. Westover?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. That takes us on to our agenda items, which number one is the resolution for our tax abatement. So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving application for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. Just for everyone knows, it's a 10-year tax abatement on real property. Ingstrom motion, Bron supported. Roll call, Thomas?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Westover?
Yes.
Ingstrom, yes. Bron?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Motion passes. That takes us on to agenda item number two, which is the tax abatement agreement between Northfield Township and Arvansango. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving application for an industrial facilities tax, I'm sorry. Sorry, on the wrong piece of paper. A motion to approve the letter of agreement for the industrial facilities exemption certificate with Arvansango.
I'll support.
Ingstrom motion, and, Chick supported, thank you. Sorry, the heat's starting to bother me. Do you need a roll call on the letter of agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Chick?
Yes.
Bron?
Yes.
Ingstrom, yes. Westover?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us on to the Van Curler financing. Anyone have any questions regarding what was, in addition to what's in Howard's memo there? Any discussion?
Yeah, if there's any questions on the financing, just so happens, he wasn't here for this item, but Steve Mann, bond counsel, Miller Canfield is here. He's the expert on these type of issues, and he can answer any questions that anybody has on financing.
I'm personally in agreement to pay the cash, you know, through the general fund and pay it back, you know, without having the finance charges and interest. And I'm willing to make that motion, but I wanted to see if anyone has any discussion items first.
So in here, they're saying that it, that we could structure it to where we could pay back to the fund balance over 10 years with a 2% interest. You're asking for none? For no interest?
No, I meant, I was just talking versus going the finance route that we were originally talking. Sorry. Save our money that way.
You can, you're just paying it back to yourself, so...
Right.
You're just artificially saving money, so you can do whatever you want. Any, any, any structure is appropriate. I don't know, it was like this at the planning commission meeting, and then the very next day, we left it on to test it, and the very next day, we came in here and the place was a meat locker. I mean, it was freezing. And so we turned it on at 2:00, thinking there wasn't going to be an issue, and clearly there is an issue, and then it'll be addressed tomorrow morning, first thing, which is why it wasn't addressed from the last meeting. The planning commission meeting was like this as well. It's been really cool in here, so I just, I'll go check it here in a bit, again, but...
So I know I'm probably jumping a little bit ahead of myself, but, you know, it looks like the soil analysis is good with the Van Curler property. All we're still waiting for is the survey stake, so everyone go out and take a look and make sure that what we think we're buying is what we're buying. So we need a solution to how we're getting to a closing.
You need to tell me how to finance it, yep. And you need to tell me, you need to give me authorization to set a closing date. Obviously contingent on the survey and mistaking happening, obviously.
Right.
But, yeah, we need to know financing.
Go ahead. Excuse me, I would be in favor of borrowing money from, for ourselves and paying ourselves back. So would I.
All right.
Would you, as part of your motion, obviously, any board in the future can change this. So, you know, you, if you set, if you say you're going to pay yourself back a percent or 2%, you know, any, any subsequent decision, it could be changed back to 0 or 1% or whatever the case may be, is, because it's all general fund dollars. But if you don't mind, with your motion, just say what you want us to build in terms of a debt service schedule to pay ourselves back, if you wish there to be a small interest payment, or if you wish it to just be 0%.
Input?
I'm fine with 2%.
What?
I'm fine with 2%.
Angie?
The purpose, the, there, you know, there's a sort of, this is a theoretical purpose. There's a time value of money. So we're taking $330,000 out of the general fund, and the value of $330,000 today is different than the value of what it'll be in 10 years. And so in order to make up so that we don't have, we don't have a theoretical net negative, we have a theoretical net even, or a theoretical net positive, we built in a 2%. You could probably take it down to 1.5%. I mean, you're basically trying to make up for the cost of living index, or what you believe inflation is, so that you're, so that all the money that you pay back to the general fund in 10 years will be worth the same as it was today. That's just from me. You don't have to do that. That's just, that's just the way I would theoretically structure it.
Why 2%?
Oh, because, because usually the, from my own... Oh, because, because usually, the, from my own standpoint, and Steve, you're more of an expert than I am on this, but cost of living index usually runs around 1.5 to 3%, so I chose 2. Pretty close? What is the cost of living today?
What is it at today? 2.7, 2.4?
But it's between 1.5 and 3 usually. Recent, I mean, in the 80s, cost of living inflation was, I don't know, 10%? 12%, 14%? So, you know, anyway, that's the reason.
So 2% is the nice median number?
Yeah.
All right. I'll make a motion to pay cash for the Van Curler property through the funds coming out of the general fund and pay back the general fund over a period of 10 years at 2% interest. Did that cover enough?
Yeah.
I'll support.
Instrom motion, and Chick supported. Those in favor? Aye. Those oppose? Motion passes, thank you.
And the reason why, the reason why that's important to do it that way is, the next meeting, we're going to be talking about the capital improvement plan for the fire department. And so, that'll allow you to have a infrastructure investment at that level as well, if you decide to do that. That's, Wagner wanted the issue separated, but it will provide that level of flexibility. The other thing is, if you end up moving forward with the CIP, with the fire department and providing them some dollars for infrastructure, we will need to adjust down the fund balance policy.
Do you need that right now? Or you want, you want a motion to support a decrease in it and discussion at a later time? Do you need that to affect the Van Curler property?
We do not need that to affect the Van Curler property, we can have a discussion on that at a later time, or we can discuss it tonight and vote on it later. I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
Well, we'll talk about that in our next workshop.
Certainly.
Okay. Everyone good with that? All right. So that takes us to number four, and I know, sorry, I jumped ahead a little bit on the soil analysis. I thought Jacob was in the audience, sorry. So we're good with, obviously, all the soil. We've already said, the survey, we just need that. Is it time to set, we should, do you need a motion to set a closing, or?
I would like a motion to set closing, absolutely.
And authorize it?
Basically, you're saying we're done with due diligence with whatever exceptions you make. So yes, I would absolutely require, request a, a motion to set closing.
How many more days would it need, would you need?
We won't do closing until we get a survey and state. We won't do, we won't close until we get an ultimate survey and state, and we get enough notice to, you guys, a week or so, so that you can look at the survey, and you can look at also the states and where the property boundaries are.
So I mean, you don't want something August 1st, but you don't want something October 1st, so.
Let us set the, let us set the date.
Well, that's what I thought you were asking.
No, no, let us set the date. You just authorize us to set the date for closing, so that.
Okay.
We know that we're done with conversation, the exception of the survey. If we need to have more debate and more conversation on moving forward with the purchase, then we should do that. But if you give us a motion to say, set the closing date, we're going to set the closing date once we get the survey and you guys have time to review the survey.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve giving authorization to Howard to set up the closing on the Van Curler property, subject to any remaining contingencies, specifically the survey. And after you hear from all of us, then go ahead and set it. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
All right. Motion on the table?
Support.
Thank you. Instrom motioned and Thomas supported, those in favor? Aye. Those oppose? Motion passes, thank you. That takes us to number five, and that's the Van Curler public participation proposal by McKenna and Associates. Welcome, you guys. You hot enough? I'm about to faint, so.
I'm gonna go check the air and see if there's something I can figure out.
Oh, yeah, come on up, sorry, you guys. My head's just not 100%. Overheating over here.
Good evening, Phil McKenna from McKenna Associates. This evening is your new project planner, Phil. At Sloan. We have submitted a proposal. Turn it off?
Put it down.
Then you can hold it.
On now? On now?
Yep, mhm.
Okay. We have prepared a proposal at Howard's request to, basically, to look at the, this property, and to devise a way of proceeding with its development in consultation with the public and the board. So at the end of this process, we'll come to you with a report that will give you our advice and that of the board, or that of the results of the public process on how to proceed. I think Sally presented that, did she present it last month to the board? And you've had an opportunity to look at it, so we'd be happy to entertain any questions.
You know, I don't have any more, I mean, do you have any comments on the RFP process and, you know, ideas for the, you know, private-public entity or anything like that? You got anything to share with us, right off the top of your head, or?
Well, it's, it is a, what we're talking about is probably, perhaps, a public-private partnership. Howard said there was a suggestion that we just ask the private market what they thought, you know, and we've been through these processes many times. You could try that, but probably, you're not going to get much of a response. Anybody that, they will want to know, first of all, how much land there is. They want to know what you're going to permit. Since you got involved in it, what are you going to, what are they going to get out of it? How long is it going to last, and so on. From your point of view, let's say somebody comes in, then you're going to want to investigate them, see if it's somebody you want to do business with in the immediate term, or in terms, in the long term. And all kinds of questions come up, and so, and you will not have anything except your own judgment on what the public thinks about it. And so, we recommend that you go through a process, which you inform the public about the issues that potentially will arise during this process, and ask their opinion. So it's sort of a two-way thing. You give them education, or we call it an environmental scan, give them the information, and then ask for their response. And some ideas will come out of it, and it will give credibility to the process that you eventually choose, that you're doing it in harmony with, in consultation with the public. The decisions are still going to be those of the board, but you will have some support as you go forward, because it's going to be, it's not, it's probably going to be at the most optimistic, two-year process, perhaps three-year process, before you put any shovels in the ground.
Been involved with a lot of those, or?
Yes.
Yeah?
We're involved in them all the time. Sally gave you a lot of examples in the, in the handout at the presentation. You know, the, a lot of it depends upon the economy, the economy is improving at the present time, and there's much more interest in real estate in their, in development than there has been, although it's nothing like it was in 2006 and so forth. So, but you can make that decision. You can hold on to part of the land, and the other part of the land, you can turn it into a public facility, whatever you, whatever you need as part of your plan, so. It is, you know, it's not, well, it's, I don't want to say it's not rocket science, but it, you know, there are some risks, but, you know, you are in control of the property, and then you can decide what you want to do, whether you want to spend money or whether you don't. Yes?
So because we haven't done this before, you'll be guiding us as planners, planners, step by step, and so that we don't lose track or time of the process. We would like to get through it and make sure that we do it correctly, so we'll need a lot of guidance from you. I know we've got outline, but we're, I hope that you're going to be heading it, you know?
Yes, we are. We will, we will provide the professional leadership, you know, in accordance with our agreement with you. And we do this all the time. We are project managers for much larger projects than this, and smaller ones too. So we have experienced people on staff who can, who can help you out during this process.
Yep, tell us what to do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, we don't want to tell you, we'll give you advice, decisions are still going to be yours.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much, and thank you for sitting through all this heat. Appreciate it.
Done it before.
Yeah, there is so much to discuss on that. I'd like to see all the public forum responses that you're getting to, Howard.
Thank you. Sorry. I just reset the air conditioning to see if it makes a difference. It was on. The air conditioning was on, but I turned it all off, waited a few seconds, turned it back on. That's as best as I can do. So the HVAC guy will be out here tomorrow morning. Guaranteed. Well, he'll be called tomorrow morning, guaranteed.
So number six is the Van Curler brokerage for the RFP public-private possible partnership. Do you want to talk further on that, or what do you?
I missed the most of what Phil said. So, I mean, I don't think they're necessarily mutually exclusive. I think we should move forward on beginning an understanding of who's going to be a commercial broker for us, that is irrespective of McKenna's public participation process. That's just sort of us identifying individuals that we feel might be able to help us with the process. But does the board want to act on the present, on the proposal previously from McKenna? Or is it something that they wish to wait on?
I have just one question regarding the brokerage. Since you've been involved in a lot of them, do you know any, you know, local brokers that stand out? Do a lot of these, or anything like that? Recommendations?
I wouldn't want to make a recommendation off the top of my head, but there's no shortage of knowledgeable brokers. You know, it depends what you can use the property for, for example. If you can use it for residential, if you're going to, it's going to be commercial or some other use, then, you know, it depends. But you can, you can get a broker involved fairly easily. There's standard agreements, they'll give you one, we'll look at it, or we have them that you can use and so on. We've got wise counsel here who is a, my experience with him, he's a real estate attorney, so.
Right. So maybe, hopefully, we can get maybe at least three to maybe do some kind of, where you can at least talk to them and.
Yeah.
Pick out a few that might have some expertise and close to the area.
Yeah, I can, I can narrow it down to, you know, three, four, kind of thing. One is in your pocket that I did recommend in my memo for, under the brokerage is, is the people who had it actually listed, which is Colliers International. Dick Timmins and, and, Dick Timmins and, I forget the other gentleman's name. Anyway, it's in my memo.
I think I'd like to try, see if we could find someone that actually lives locally, you know, maybe, and knows the area a little bit.
Right. Yeah, you're a little bit ahead of yourselves. What do you need one for right now?
What, what? Well, I, I think that, I think that both processes are not mutually exclusive. I actually think that we can go through the public participation process and identify what the needs of, or what the desires of the residents and the community are, and we can also begin the conversation of what is feasible and practical from the development sense.
That would be part of the process.
Yeah, and, and, and I think that the commercial broker can help us with that piece of the analysis of what do we think is feasible. Even if we don't put out an RFP in two or three months, I think we can begin that conversation and begin that relationship. Even if we put in the RFP out in a year from now, we can start understanding what, what we've got and what ends up being possible alongside the, you know, the process of the public participation process of identifying what does the community want, what do the residents want. And then those things will ultimately tie themselves together.
So I guess that's my question, because in the memo, it says, there's a lot of work to go into creating, and the, the. They're going to want to know what we want done there before they engage, correct? The broker, I mean.
Yes, if you don't, if you don't make it clear what.
Right.
What the deal is, and I'm a developer, you're looking for a developer, you're looking for a partner, maybe. Maybe you're going to do it all yourself, too. That's an option, but apparently, you're thinking that you're not going to need all that land for public facilities, right?
We don't know yet.
We don't know, okay, so. So you, the, in terms of the RFP, there's a lot of work involved. Most of the work is figuring out what you want to do and what's the best way to go about it. For example, we have sent out very complicated RFPs for big pieces of property, which require financial statements, require experience, require all of this stuff, and we got no response. You know why? Too much work, no guarantee, you know, they got to spend $10,000, $20,000, maybe more to respond to the RFP, and no way to figure out whether they've got any chance whatsoever that these seven people up here are going to select them. You know, it's not like dealing with one person. You know, if you got a deal with her, she and I have a deal, well, that's me and her, that's it. But in the public arena, when you got a public-private partnership, how many people you got involved? You got at least 20, even when you consider the board, the planning commission, the staff. And, you know, it might, your fate might be in the hands of a, of a reporter, you know, who gets up to this, it's terrible. Or the planning commission turns it down on a 5-4 vote. Those kind of things are all involved, so you won't, before you go to the market, you want to have some idea of what you, what you're going to do. Because once you go there and you make a mistake and you don't, you lose your credibility with the, with the market. By market, you know, I don't know how many people, maybe, probably, who would be interested in it? Maybe 10 or 15, maybe only four or five, but, you know, it's a fairly small group of people that are likely to jump on.
So is your recommendation to wait on a broker until we know what we want to do with it?
Let's figure that out during the process.
Okay.
We think we need a broker in here, let's go sign one up. Or you may get their advice for free. I don't like to do that, as a consultant, I like to get paid, but, and like the other consultants get paid. But, you know, you're going to get some ideas from, from the public process. And then you can decide what kind of a broker you want.
The broker relationship, when we move forward with that, will be free. I, I mean, I wasn't anticipating the township moving forward.
It'll be free if they think that there's some success and then they're locked into the deal, and they're going to get paid. But if it's, if they, if they, if they think that you're going off with an RFP and somebody else is going to come in with their own broker and everything.
I agree.
You know, you, they say it's too risky, I ain't going to do that.
Right, I agree.
Or if I do, I'll do it because I want to help out the public, but they don't have skin in it, you know, that's a different deal.
If I could also just add, one of the items of the process will be a market snapshot. So before the actual public participation of engaging the public, there will be a market snapshot in the 10-minute area. It'll exclude Ann Arbor and Brighton to be a very local market. And that will help the public participation process in terms of, A, what the market might support, both commercial and perhaps housing or office. And B is what the public will support. The market may support something, but if the public doesn't, I think the plan should reflect that. And then, whatever the RFP happens to be, that can give a developer and a broker some predictability. If it's something the market will support and something that the public will support through that public process, I think that we would have a much more robust RFP and get a lot of great responses, because they see that there's predictability, there's a market, the public's behind it, and there's really good tailwinds there. So that's what the master plan process for this would yield.
All right. Well, regardless, I mean, I would like to get everything started as quickly, as much as we can do, as you know how slow. As you know how slow government works and nothing gets done very quickly, but, you know, two to three years, I think everyone's looking for a broker or something a lot sooner if we could.
I think they're looking for a vote on this today.
I, that's correct.
So I'll make a motion. I'm, I'm looking at a July 6, 2016 memo from McKenna and Associates that outlines a $16,500 very detailed cost breakdown that describes their, what they're calling a work plan. I would make a motion to authorize the township manager to execute this contract subject to attorney review and not to exceed the, the rate that's quoted in the, in the memorandum.
I support. And Thomas made a motion and Otto supported. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
And I think that what we'll do, just based on Mr. McKenna's recommendation, I think we'll, we'll just hold off on the broker relationship. But I do think that that's something that you want to keep in the back of your mind and be on the lookout for, if you wish, to give thoughts as to, as, you know, individuals that you feel like might be able to assist in the, the commercial real estate aspect. And, you know, if you, you know, know anyone, see signs on a regular basis that you think, you know, might be able to assist, you know, let me know. And we'll also be thinking about who's the best one to sort of represent the township's interests when we're ready to move forward in the development process.
Great. Okay, that takes us on to number seven of our agenda, which is the tax sale properties. I know we have beat that horse to death, and where do we stand on this?
Madam Chair, give me one second.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, the decision is the board's at this moment. We've had multiple conversations and discussions, and it's, it's whatever the board's pleasure is. I'll make my comment after the vote.
Well, as we've talked about before, it has been our policy in the past that we do buy all of them. Is that not correct?
It is. It's, it's been our policy in the past that we consolidate the properties in these two areas. One for the Horseshoe Lake wetland sort of protection with respect to flooding and the other for ultimately the development of the seven, the, excuse me, the development of the preserve behind Township Hall, which in some irony, Mr. McKenna's firm actually did an initial design around many, many, many years ago. Yes? Yeah. Anyway, so.
Did FEMA come out and do, what turned out with FEMA and Horseshoe Lake?
Nothing specific to Horseshoe Lake, but FEMA did come out and do their community systems visit, and we're waiting on their analysis as to whether or not they will allow us entry into the program. But.
And our underwater properties there give us credit.
If they, if we're allowed into the program, yes, they will give us credit. And that will ultimately help the residents have a decreased flood insurance. And man, this heat is getting to me as well.
I know. Maybe, I don't know if there's anything else. I mean, any of these other items need to be taken care of tonight? Maybe we could skip that and get moving on the meeting so we can end it maybe sooner. We still got call to the public again and everything. Everyone share your thoughts. But let's get through the tax sale right now.
So the ones that we are considering are the one on Butternut Drive, Raphael Avenue, I take it, by Horseshoe Lake. The other one is, and I can't remember what that street is, but these are in the Summer Home District. And all the ones from the list on the county you're suggesting?
They're both the same properties, the list and the, and the properties that you have in your packet. They're the same.
Okay, because they, the parcel numbers are different.
Some of them are not in Northfield Township, but just the ones in Northfield Township, they should be the same properties. I'll check that as I'm looking myself.
No, the, the list is all Northfield, the second page.
Yeah, that's these, right? Yeah.
Yeah, 009.
And then you have these other ones. One, two, three, four. Seven, eight.
Oh, the, the entire list, the list of all the properties in Northfield, I think that's the full list of properties in Northfield. The only ones that we're interested in is 203-004, 201-006, 276-004, 457.
Wait, wait, can you do just, just the last three digits, please? Or start at the top. Main Street, are you interested in that one? 009.
I do not believe the Main Street property we are interested in, no. I, I don't see that on the list here.
It's on the.
I know. I, I see it on this list, but I'm looking at the map and I do not see it on the maps. And I do not believe we would be interested in a property off of Main Street.
All right, Walnut. Yes, right? Raphael Avenue that doesn't exist?
Yeah, Walnut, yes.
Shady Beach?
The ones that, the ones that were interested in, the ones that have maps associated with them.
Okay, that's what I asked.
Yes.
Are those the ones that are?
Yes, and I, I, I miscorrectly stated that they were the same list. I apologize.
Okay.
The, the ones that were interested are the ones that are, have the maps associated.
Okay. Other one, two, three, four. Eight. So there's eight properties.
Four.
Oh, only four? Okay. Oh, you got the bigger pictures. Never mind. Just this map.
And then the individual maps are the individual properties.
That's what I, that's why I counted eight.
Well, I'll just go ahead and throw it out there and see if anyone wants to second it. I'll make a motion to authorize, Howard and the township, to buy the four properties as presented in our package. I'll say the Sidwell number's 203-004, 006. And actually, I'll go back and I'll put the value on it. First one at 203-004, $1,124. Parcel number two, ending in 006, for $787. Parcel 012, the one on Raphael Avenue that does not exist, for a total of $820. And Sidwell number 276-004, that's only a partial Sidwell, by the way, with a total value of $848.
I'll support.
Inkster motion and Otto supported. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, how does everyone feel about the heat? I think the, the next three, I think, could wait if we want to. All right. Okay, number eight is the ordinance for the Board of Trustees, from the Planning Commission for the new Whitmore Lake and Horseshoe Lake overlay district. I just had a comment or I have a little discussion that I'd like to throw out there. I don't care when. Are you doing, are you taking care of that motion orig, Janet?
I'm looking for it, sorry.
Okay. Well, in the meantime, while you look for that, I wanted just to, you know, my thoughts on it was I would like to see the, see it stay. The reason that the Planning Commission was doing this was to allow our residents easier access to rebuild, add on, things like that, instead of having to keep coming to the township, to the ZBA. So in, which is a great, thank you, I've always said that for years. But our setback on the back, on the lakeside, has always been 20 feet, and it just, at the last minute, got thrown in as 25 feet. So I know Ms. Jackley was here saying for environmental purposes and runoff, and I have to disagree. The more grass you have, the more fertilizer, the more fertilizer, the more runoff into the lake. And then we have the millifoil, and we all pay already in our taxes to have the lake treated chemically to keep the weeds down. So my thoughts are, I would like to see it stay at the 20 feet as originally as it was.
Can I make a motion, and if you want to amend it, you can add an amendment?
Two.
Okay. All right. I make a motion to approve an ordinance of the Board of Trustees of Northfield Township, Michigan, to amend the zoning ordinance to add a new Whitmore Lake, Horseshoe Lake overlay district.
Thank you. And just, I'm sorry, Chick motion and Thomas supported. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye.
No, as written, I was going to say.
As written, which is the 25.
As written is 20, because this is written as 20. If you want to change it to 25.
We were handed another one that corrected it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 my fault, guys. Okay, so let's, let's, let's take a step back, if I may. The Planning Commission approved 25 feet. As written would be, and it was, it was changed this morning, reprinted, as written would be 25 feet, okay? If you want to change it to 20 feet.
Got it, all right.
Okay, so.
So where is the mo, what, what do you have on the motion, then?
As written.
As.
As written of 25.
Yeah.
At 25. Okay. So then we are at a vote process for 25 feet. Those in favor? Those opposed? Yea, nay? Aye?
Yeah, I guess I don't understand what.
I want 20 feet, so no.
Okay.
Otto.
I want to continue 20 feet.
West over. I agree. So I'm a nay. Brown?
It's only 20 feet.
All right, so now we need a new motion.
So you need a new motion, right?
Okay, here I go. Hold on. I will make a motion to approve an ordinance of the Board of Trustees of Northfield Township, Michigan, to amend the zoning ordinance to add a new Whitmore Lake, Horseshoe overlay district at a lakefront rear yard, not less than 20 feet.
Thank you. Took it away from me, huh? Chick motion and Thomas supported. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Did you, you don't need a roll call on that, do you?
I think that's fine.
It's an ordinance.
You know, on your ordinance, you do have yea's and nays, so.
It, it's fine. It just, I'm assuming that it just passed unanimously because you all stated that you want 20 in the initial discussion. So we're fine, and you don't need a, you don't, you don't, by statute, need a roll call vote for ordinances.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so number nine, that takes us to nine, and that's the ordinance for us to amend the zoning Board of Appeals to grant variances. So we're just changing the standards a little bit, you know, a little easier to say yes. And Jackie, if you want to jump in on my.
No.
No? Okay. Do you have a motion prepared?
I, no, I don't.
Okay. I'd be happy to do it if you want.
I will support you.
Um, hold on a second. I need a front of me.
Actually, that came from the Planning Commission, so where's my stuff?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance over the Board of Trustees of Northfield Township, Michigan, to amend the zoning ordinance to update the standards used by the town, by the zoning Board of Appeals to grant variances.
I'll support.
Oh, sorry.
I'll give it to Jackie if you don't mind. Inkster motion and Otto supported. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to number 10, the motion to allow a broadscape to hook up to the sewers.
I'd recommend allowing broadscape to hook up to the sewers. Tim?
Yep. I'll make a motion to allow broadscape landscaping to hook up to the sewer on Whitmore Lake Road.
They have to pay their tap fee.
Yeah, well, of course, yeah. Pay the tap fee. Got that, Lisa? Sorry. Okay.
Sewer connection fee.
Yes, it's no longer a tap fee. Sewer connection fee. And Inkster motioned, and I'm sorry, did I get a support on that one? Yes, thank you, Chick. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion passes. That takes us on to our second call to the public. Once again, an opportunity to get up and speak. It is not a question-answer session, and we do limit you to three minutes. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Lenore Zelenek. I live at 14406 Mile. Obviously, the board knows my viewpoint on selling of the bonds. I'm in disagreement. I would not have recommended that. I just always think it's bad practice chasing interest rates or chasing markets. Usually, when you do, you come out on the short end. But what I do also find very concerning is that the auditor would have gave us recommendation to sell the bonds. That truly is not his fiduciary responsibility, and I do find that extremely concerning that he would give that recommendation. And I, you know, I don't know if anything can be looked further at that, but I, that is not a position of financial advisor. That's why you have them to give that opinion, but not the auditor. Thank you. Our next one, our next speaker, thank you.
You have 30 more seconds.
And what's the difference is I'm directed everywhere to find out what Mr. Fink's goals and objectives are. And my performance craisels, it's right, it's right on performance craisels. It's all the items that I was later focused on every single day. I would really like to know what Mr. Fink did. I completely agree with the structure. I actually think Mr. Fink is a very dynamic man, and I think he probably did a great job. I would like to see how the whole system worked, and that's why I asked for the documents. It looks to me, bringing my professional experience in play here. It looks to me, bringing my professional experience in the play here, which I will do if I could elect it, is that it can be made much simpler, it can be made much better, and it'd be much easier for Mr. Fink to do his job.
You're over time now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for our last call to the public?
The comments regarding the Northfield neighbors is based on current and past negativity. Biltmore has not happened, Myers hasn't happened for over eight years, and they said they were for downtown development, but complained about the purchase of the Van Curler property, complained about this new boardroom, the acoustics in this room are better, and the lighting is better than in the other area, and it's more professional, and we don't have to sit and wait for the fluorescent light to go out and maybe come flock back on again. Also, um, one other thing I want to say is, once again, I also want to thank you, Kathy Brown, and the entire board, and Howard, for doing a great job, and I resent people coming up here, and all they do is badmouth. They need to sit down and get positive for a change, not negative, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
I'm Jack Secret, I live on Nala Road. I'm a member of the downtown planning group that, that this body put together. Our chair is Barb Griffiths, our mentor and facilitator is Howard, who's doing a fine job. We're a group of, I think, citizens that are committed to the future of Whitmore Lake and trying to make proposals to this group that may move it forward. We've done some good work so far, we've got more to do, but we'll be back to you with some good proposals. Just want to let you know, we are working on it, we've got great ideas, and I hope we can make a difference. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening, again. Marling Chockley, 2665 Five Mile Road, and I just want to make a comment for a little background about that 25-foot setback. A normal per, a normal developer coming in to, to do a subdivision needs to have their building built 50 feet from the high water mark of a, of a water body. 25 feet of that is for a vegetated buffer, for the protection of the water body, and so, that's 50 feet. Now, we're talking about allowing, and, and it currently is 20 feet, but being out there talking to the people in Horseshoe Lake, when they're talking about the water rising and the flooding and, and all of that, if we're setting, if we're not setting that back further, you know, it's only five feet, 20 feet is from here to here. That's 20 feet, I mean, that's pretty close to the water. 25 feet isn't much further from the water, but it's a little more protection of that water. And, you know, and we're talking about groundwater recharge, that's our groundwater recharge areas for the township, and there, there are issues with runoff. There, there's issues with runoff from the roads, from, um, people doing their, there was coal tar sealants on their driveways, that can runoff into the water, that's a carcinogen. So, it's not asking a lot for 5 feet, and we're not asking people to move their houses back 50 feet from the water, it's just five more, and it really basically only affects about a handful of homes that are currently already built within that 25 feet. So, they're, they'd be grandfathered, that's not an issue. The 25 feet is just a recommendation from the Huron River Watershed Council to protect the water. We're not moving the, the houses back to 50 feet where is the real recommendation. So, you know, yes, we have 20 feet right now, I was hoping for a little more protection for the water, but if that's not something you're interested in, we gave them 15 more feet on the front side, closer to the, to the road, and another 20 feet closer to the road. So, it's, it's not like anybody is losing any building envelope, in fact, they're gaining. So, I just want you to know, that's kind of the background of that whole thing, we did have some argument back and forth at the Planning Commission, it was a 3-2 vote to go with the 25 feet, uh, we had two of our members missing, but anyway, just, just for some background there for you. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers tonight? All right. That takes us on to our second board member comments. Anyone else? Tracy, you got something?
Yeah, I'd like to note for the record that it's 9:00 and our meeting's almost over, but it's getting cooler.
And it looks like a nice storm coming through.
There's a short, there's an electrical short somewhere is what's happening.
Jackie, you got anything?
Yeah, um, Marlene, I do appreciate you coming up and giving that explanation. I don't know if you've ever been on Horseshoe Lake when it floods, or, um, I have several friends that live on Horseshoe Lake. Five feet is nothing when it floods over there. It'll flood past the house. It floods up to the roads. So, when we have a good thaw in the wintertime, the whole thing is, is how Horseshoe Lake is structured, where you have three or four, um, streams coming, five, sorry, correction, five streams coming in, one string going out, and that is the problem with Horseshoe Lake. And the best thing to do on Horseshoe Lake is put your house on stilts, and maybe it won't flood, but moving back five feet is not going to make a difference. 'Cause I know a lot of them, several of them that do have even a 30 or 50, still get their houses flooded. Just wanted to make that note.
Angie, anything?
All right. I have two, two points here. Our, um, uh, speaker that was recently had come up, um, I find it just very odd and disturbing that you would even want to ask for our personal reviews of Howard. We cannot go to your place of business and ask for your performance reviews.
It is in public record.
But to, I'm not having a conversation with you, and for anyone to foia that, I would have really serious concerns over. I will publicly say, and I bet you everyone on this board will publicly say, we are happy with Howard and his performance, and if that's not enough for you, maybe our voters need to know that. I also, Marlene, on your comment regarding the Horseshoe Lake, it is much different than Hor, than Whitmore Lake, and I don't, that's why I didn't want the two lakes to be combined as one. Horseshoe Lake is in a, in a natural flood plain, and flood insurance is required there, whereas, oh, I only know of maybe five properties on Whitmore Lake that accidentally got in the flood plain are in there. And people can always move it back, if they want, don't want to be near the water's edge, then go for it. So, that's all I got. Anyone else?
I just want to, in respect, out of respect for our auditor, John Feffer, make it perfectly clear, he did not recommend selling the bonds, I don't know where the person who said that went. He said that those were unorthodox investments for the amount of money we had in this smaller township, and those bonds were purchased when there was no treasurer here. The treasurer hadn't been here for two years, so we don't even really know who purchased them. Also, to the person who keeps mentioning Howard and his evaluation, you said, I wish I knew how Howard really did. Well, you, you would have known that if you'd been participating in this township government for the last three and a half years. You show up right at election time and say, I wish I knew how he had done, so I'm going to pull his evaluations. It only proves you haven't really been paying attention at the board meetings. I mean, that's all, I mean, because we've been here, we've been watching it day to day to day, I see Howard every single day. So, I'm just saying, it's frustrating.
This is not your time to speak. Janet, go ahead, please.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, in regard to documented or written goals and objectives for Howard, he gets his goals and objectives from the board, so they, they fluctuate constantly, week to week, day to day. He has administrative duties, absolutely, which is probably what was in the posting, I don't even know what the posting said, but, but, yeah, so his goals and objectives change constantly, so we dictate to him. He's at the will of the board, um, he brings wonderful ideas and suggestions to the board, and, um, I, we are blessed to have this man working for this township, and the people that condemn and condemn and tell stories, and they're doing that because they, they, they have a purpose, and it's not the same purpose as the, uh, for the benefit of the township. So, and the other thing, Kathy's comment about, I think it was me that, I think, probably she got it from me, that I said, well, that even the auditor said that we should sell them. I want to clarify, he did not say we should sell them, he said we needed to look at them, and, and when he says we need to look at them, then I think that's a good recommendation to look.
Angie, did you have something?
I do, and I don't want this to come across as me not supporting the money going to People's Express, because I actually do, I think it's a great program, but I, I just want everyone to really consider the politics behind a lot of the things that go on here, and it's very difficult to listen to people come up and speak, like Kathy mentioned and Janet mentioned, when we're close to an election time. You know, when I, when I see people, for instance, like Lenore, who's a great person, does great things for this community, come up and ask for money for her programs, and then I receive in my mail a fancy yellow card that tells me to vote for her because she opposes the spending that goes on in this township, I take major issue with that, and as a taxpayer and as a voter, I just really, really hope that other people out there are paying attention to that as well.
Thank you, couldn't say that better myself. If anyone has anything else, say your piece, if not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I know.